I told, I told.
Uh oh.
Look, just. I can give you a little. Just send me a.
What? What?
So you know this, you recognize.
What the paint? Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be interesting.
Yeah, I guess it will. You're, you're.
I'm gonna go tick the box.
Um, tell me what you think it is. I mean, there, there's probably a tendency. Depending on, in the size of the house.
I miss the war heat. Hey, Sandy.
Wow, that's a good question.
Well, you know.
I think.
Your minutes.
Well, I mean, it was just Tari, so I got Tari as a buffer, you know, during the government.
He sounded horrible yesterday. Oh, I wouldn't even come there.
It looks like he's well willing to do that. But I can't do that.
You got it.
Yeah. For God's answer, it has to do with when it expires.
Oh, yeah.
I got one.
Okay. Started on the.
It's over.
Oh, sorry. Not being this. That'll be it.
I'm calling.
Okay.
I panicked.
Yeah. Okay. The couple is a lot easier. Two or three of them were at seven. Or they just come into the. Whatever.
I just wanna say.
Whatever it is. Whatever it is. No, 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 no. That's not it. Whatever it is, it's yours and I'm leaving.
Whatever it is, it's your fault.
See, Marcus gives you that. Here's my opinion.
Don't stare down his lungs.
Yeah. Okay. I'm as okay as I'm gonna get.
I like your booger tea cup.
Just got off the Christmas card.
Y'all ready? Cause I ain't ready. Yeah, they did. Oh, don't talk about their games.
I think.
Give me about two minutes.
Oh, that's why.
Okay.
I think that's.
He's so small.
Hey, Jane. I think I was in third grade, maybe.
Okay, thank you. I'll just make it through. Good afternoon, everyone. The Shreveport City Council meeting is now called to order. I'm going to ask Father Paul to give the invocation. I'm going to ask Councilman Brooks to lead us in the pledge. And before we do, I'm going to ask the Davis family to stand, please. Yesterday, we lost one of our one hundred and ten year old citizens in the city of Shreveport. And I think, as you know, that's the second that we've lost this year that were both one hundred and ten years old. And so the Davis family is here. And so I also would like to take a moment of silence for them, Father Paul.
Of course.
So, if you will. Thank you so much. I also want to ensure that we remember our city employee, Mr. Robert Johnson, who also passed last week due to a drowning. So we could take a moment of silence for him as well and the Department of Water and Sewer. Thank you. And Sandy, you all have our condolences to Ms. Elvira Elia Davis, one hundred and ten years old, you all. One hundred and ten years old. Father Paul, thank you.
What a blessing.
Amen.
Okay, heavenly fathers, we gather together this afternoon. We just give you thanks for all the creative opportunities you bring to us every day. Lord, we pray for those who have been called to leadership in this city, those who have been called to the service of bringing light and life to this city. We pray for indeed Tabitha Taylor, for Gary Brooks, Jim Tally Faro, Grayson Butcher, Alan Jackson, James Green, Ursula Bowman. Lord, I pray that you inspire them and guide them, that they may do always that which accords with your will. And for the furtherance of this wonderful city. Pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna ask that you remain standing. Chief Reese, would you come up to the front? Because we also wanna offer a moment of prayer to the Robinson and Spearman family and those other two little girls that tragically passed in the fire. You can call their names.
Oh, uh, that would be Danielle and Aleah Spearman and Robinson. And funeral arrangements have been posted at this time. Thank the community for their support. Thank y'all for y'all's support. We ask that you would continue to pray for our firefighters as they are having a hard time dealing with that loss along with that family.
A moment of silence, please. Thank you all so much. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilman Brooks.
Here.
Councilman Tally Faro.
Here, ma'am.
Councilman Butcher.
Here.
Councilman Jackson.
Here.
Councilman Green.
I'm here.
And Councilwoman Boltman.
Present.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference Monday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty five, and the city council meeting Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty five?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Butcher. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And that passes with seven?
Does any council member have any awards, recognition, or distinguished guest not to exceed fifteen minutes? And before they answer, I do wanna take a point of personal privilege. Yesterday, if you watched the Shreveport City Council work session, there was much debate on Paint Your Heart Out. And watching some of the news media in reference that, they referenced the council. Please understand and know that that is not a council initiative, that it's not something that we proposed and it's on the agenda or are on the agenda. And I just wanted to clear that up. That is not a council initiative to discontinue Paint Your Heart Out. And I think I needed to say that for clarity. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Hold on, okay.
You can go ahead. I'll yield.
I, I just simply wanted to recognize one of my closest friends, Mr. Wesley Adams. Good to see you, Wesley. And they, they said your platforms would be in sometime before the first of the year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, is Attorney Mike Basada in the chamber?
Wait till we use you.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be fine.
Councilwoman, vice chair.
Is the family of Joyce Taylor Dixon here today? Okay, we had a resolution for her one hundredth birthday. Madam Clerk, can you go ahead and read it and we'll go ahead and vote for it?
A resolution celebrating the life of Joyce Taylor Dixon. Whereas Joyce Taylor Dixon was born in Shreveport, Louisiana on November thirteenth, nineteen twenty five. And this year marks the milestone of her one hundredth birthday. Whereas she was back in the Our Lady of the Blessed Sacrament Catholic Church in Shreveport, where she remains an active member of the Altar Rosary Society. And whereas at the age of sixteen, shortly after graduating from high school, Ms. Dixon moved to New York City to pursue career opportunities, working as a clerk in a factory. Whereas after returning to Shreveport, Ms. Dixon contributed to her community through various roles, including positions at Phelps Shoe Store and as a dispatch at Green Cab Company, Louisiana's first black-owned cab company. Whereas she worked in healthcare as a dietitian assistant and later as a diet coordinator supervisor for twenty-two years and made caregiving, caregiving her last occupation, caring for her mother, sister, and husband. And whereas throughout her life, Joyce Taylor Dixon has not only witnessed but also contributed to the growth and progress of her community for over ten decades. Now therefore, being resolved by the city council of the city of Shreveport and due legal and regular session convene that it hereby joins the Dixon family and celebrates and wishes Ms. Joyce Taylor Dixon a very happy one hundredth birthday.
Wow.
Councilman Butcher?
Attorney Basada. Thank you for coming today and I hope you can hang around for a little bit. I have a question for you and I would like for you to kinda give me a synopsis of what the North Louisiana, Northwest Louisiana Financial Authority, is that if?
Yeah, Finance Authority.
Yeah, Finance Authority. If you could kinda give me a synopsis of what the role of that is and how it relates to Shreveport. I've, I've seen us vote on stuff from, from Ruston to Natchitoches, you know, to all over. And you are the council for that?
Yes, sir.
Organization, correct?
Yes, sir.
If you could, kinda give me a synopsis of what that organization does and how it relates to this body and the city of Shreveport.
So the Northwest Louisiana Finance Authority is a local public trust. And it's very much, it's very similar to what you would think of when you think of a trust in general. But these public trusts are allowed to be created to do economic and community development. And when the trust is created, the trust has to name a beneficiary of that trust. And so in this case, the beneficiary of the trust is the city of Shreveport. So the connection there is the city of Shreveport has to authorize it. The city of Shreveport does get to appoint the members, but it is not the city of Shreveport. The only reference that you'll see to the city of Shreveport is the fact that it is the beneficiary, meaning that the city of Shreveport gets the benefits of the trust, but no obligations. And it also means that if you look in the city's audit, it is for governmental standard, governmental accounting standards, it's considered a discreetly reported component unit, meaning that the financial statements of the Finance Authority are in the audit of the city. Only because that is where, that is in order to give it visibility to the public. But the city is in no way, shape, or form obligated in any way to anything the Northwest Louisiana Finance Authority does.
So the Northwest Louisiana Financial Authority, they, Finance Authority, they are not a political subdivision of the city of Shreveport?
No, they're considered a public corporation.
Who formed that?
The city did, well, it was petitioned, a group of individuals did in the late, and don't hold me to these years, but the late seventies, I think it was seventy-eight, a group of individuals came and requested that they be given permission by the city of Shreveport to create the public trust. And so that was given and.
That's under state statute, correct?
Under state statute.
The state legislature created these districts.
Correct.
And how many are there in the state of Louisiana?
I couldn't tell you that, but there are a large number, especially there's, I mean, there's essentially one in every major metropolitan area. And there's a lot of others, you know, smaller ones outside of that that I'm not familiar with. But there are most major areas, as well as there's some statewide public trusts that have been created, essentially all for the same purpose, to provide community and economic development. It's a system that you would see in just about every other state that you go to. It's very common. And it is a way to allow for projects to be undertaken without having to rely on the, the credit of the government itself. So it, it adds some flexibility while not obligating the government to have to do anything.
So we, as a city, have no liabilities to this organization and we have no assets from this organization, correct?
Correct. And, and in fact, the statute says that no funds of said beneficiary derived from sources other than the trust property or the operation thereof shall be charged with or expended for property of or the operation of said trust. So very clearly, the law prohibits the government that created the trust, the beneficiary, from having any kind of liability exposure. It goes on to get more emphatic when it talks about issuing bonds. And it says, any obligations issued by a public trust shall not constitute or create any debt or debts, liability or liabilities, or a loan of the credit of or the pledge of the faith and credit of the beneficiary, but shall be solely the obligation of the public trust. And any bonds or loans that were to be issued have to have that statement in there notifying anybody that buys the bond that they have no recourse whatsoever, there is no connection to the local, the city of Shreveport, that this is solely the obligation of the trust.
In this trust and some of the financing that, that the trust gets, I would assume that there's several different revenue sources that come in. One is the USDA, is that correct?
The USDA is a, is a loan source that, that will purchase bonds that are issued by the Finance Authority. Essentially, the revenues that would come to the Finance Authority come as a result of their role facilitating different financings. And so there's an administrative fee that's paid.
So the USDA, any loan that's issued by the USDA or any other, I'm gonna use, just because I'm a real, residential realtor, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, they are gonna pretty much underwrite these loans themselves?
Absolutely. So for instance, in a USDA-type loan, the, the process that you would have to go through is number one, you would have to apply to the USDA. And if anybody that's worked with USDA grants or loans, it's a very long, a very all-encompassing process and takes a significant amount of time because they look at everything. And so if you're, if you're saying that you are going to, for instance, you know, get a loan to fund a bridge, they're gonna look at every projection, every pro forma, they're gonna run it against their historical data, they're gonna do their market studies. And then if they determine that this is a very safe bond, loan to purchase, then they'll give you what's called a, a letter of conditions. Once you get that letter of conditions, then that would have to go back to the Finance Authority. The Finance Authority would have to give preliminary approval to issue that bond. It would then have to go to the State Bond Commission in Baton Rouge. The State Bond Commission staff would have to review everything and ensure that everything was compliant. If that happens, then it would come back to the Finance Authority and those bonds would be issued because the USDA has said that essentially, we believe that this is a very safe investment. And if you look at municipal bond default rates, I mean, going back to twenty fifteen, it's point zero five percent, point zero zero six percent. It went up to point zero nine percent in twenty seventeen because of the Puerto Rican bankruptcy. And then it goes all the way down to point zero zero eight percent in twenty twenty-two. So if the USDA is underwriting this and signing off on something, you can rest pretty assured that it is going to be a very safe investment.
So to sum up real quick, and I'm gonna ask one other question about the USDA and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish and give it to other council members if they have questions. We vote on these because we are the fiduciary of the trust somewhat.
The beneficiary.
Beneficiary of the trust. And so we voted on Buc-E's, is that correct? Didn't that come to us?
Uh, not Buc-E's, but yes, on Meta.
Okay. And then we voted on a project down in Natchitoches here recently as well?
Yes.
By no means is any taxpayer dollars from Shreveport, my hard-earned property taxes or sales tax are going to finance any of these projects.
You're absolutely right. It's quite the opposite. Actually, all of those projects will pay fees to the Finance Authority that are reinvested in this community, in the beneficiary community.
Okay.
It's, it's essentially. It's essentially to, you know, in the past, in order to do some of these projects, you would have to go to Baton Rouge, and you would have to get permission from a board in Baton Rouge. Essentially, this allows us to say, you know, instead of going Baton Rouge, just come to Shreveport.
And I would assume that there are all kinds, like we talked about, there's all kinds of different lenders. But USDA basically deals with anything that's not urban, correct?
This particular, I mean, they have several different programs, but yes, in general, as a general rule, their programs typically are for rural communities.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mike, hang around if you don't mind. Anybody else?
Do I have any questions? Okay, we'll see you later. Does any other council member?
Mr. Mayor, doing this, starting November first, if we possibly still have the shutdown, will we have grace for our citizens as far as there want to be of those that's on social security or whatever? Have you all said anything as to giving them some grace until it's balanced out?
Mr. Green, y'all have, y'all have set forth collection standards by ordinance that we're required to follow, and we will be required to follow those.
Okay, thank you.
But we don't plan to cut off anybody's water.
Okay.
Get mad at me for not following your ordinance, but I can't do it both ways.
No, I'm just asking the question. I just, I just wanted to know. Man, I really could have. I could.
Mayor, I just know, do you have any awards, recognition, or distinguished guests not to exceed fifteen minutes?
No, ma'am.
Do you have any communications of the mayor relative to city business?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does any member have any questions or concerns relative to property standards for Mr. Green? Oh, today you have on your autism shirt. You just moved, come on, man. I'm not mad at you.
He got that deer in the headlights.
Well, just saying.
Thank you for getting the grass cut at the Sheridan.
Got you.
Or whatever it's called.
Whatever it's called.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, Councilman Green.
Check on the Exon on Monk House Drive.
Exon?
They have, yes, they have boards around it, a fence, but the grass is tall.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
And could you give us an update on the Family Dollar stores? I want to check specifically Jefferson Page and Pines Road area. I wanted you to check with the, with the grass that is on that adjacent lot that is pretty high.
At Jefferson Page and Pines Road?
Yes.
Okay.
The other Family Dollar on that end does pretty well with that. And also want you to check the Family Dollar that is at Ford Street, which is now what? Common Street?
Okay.
Okay. I'd like you to check on that, too. And we've already given you the other notices that we've already had. I have at least on that. Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, have a good one.
Everyone should have received the Revenue Collection Plan and Implementation Report yesterday. Today, we are required to hold a public hearing on ninety-seven A of 2025. The public hearing is now called to order. Does the administration have a presentation?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I don't believe we actually have a formal one. This has been a subject of a public hearing previously. It is to create a Tiff Financing District that includes some of the downtown area and stretches out to Millennium. We'd be happy to answer any questions that come up during the meeting.
Does the council have any questions? It's the same presentation that we had about a month ago. And so it's just a repeat of what we had to vote on, to correct something that the newspaper did not have in it for this legislation. So we're good? All right. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor or opposition of ordinance ninety-seven A of 2025? Seeing there is none. Public hearing is closed. Madam Clerk, will there be any legislation to be added today?
No, ma'am.
Today, we will hear public comments on agenda items only. You have three minutes to speak, and please state your name and address for the record. Madam Vice Chair will handle this portion of the agenda. Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears. Eleven thirty-three South Point Parkway, apartment one eleven, Shreveport, Louisiana seven one one oh five. I wish to speak on resolutions nine A one twenty-two and nine A one twenty-nine. I think it's a great idea to take care of a cooperative endeavor agreement between both the City of Shreveport and Housing Authority of the City of Shreveport. A lot of people enjoy being on housing, and that includes yours truly, me. Also, please vote yes on this resolution and celebrate the life of Joyce Taylor Dixon, if you would please to vote yes. These will be very much appreciated, and in two days, I'm going.
Thank you. Jonathan Graham. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Jonathan Graham. I'm at nine three seven eight Millbank Drive. I'm going to talk a little about the Red River Expressway. So my family and I moved here four months ago. We're a military family. And we had no idea that this, of this proposed four-lane highway just two hundred feet away from our backyard. If we had known, we probably would have looked somewhere else in Shreveport. Our neighbor, my neighbors are probably going to cover a lot of the home value risks that we may face. But I'd like to try to paint a picture of how close this is going to be, and how damaging this will be to our community. So this is only going to be two hundred feet away from twenty-plus homes, backyards, as well as our main Millbank Park. And for reference, that's about the size of Little League Field. When I was ten years old, I could hit a baseball outside of Little League Field. And then if you're a golfer, it's about a flop wedge. So it is extremely close, that's the bottom line. Just imagine semi-trucks and Shreveport traffic barreling down a four-lane highway just two hundred feet away from where you send your kids to play every single day. Pretty much this road wedges itself between Twelve Oaks and Espinac Community, and there's virtually no buffer zone. All there is is a small bayou and then a thin strip of grass that kids routinely play in. Now, I know Tim James may look at, make it all look pretty on charts, but at the end of the day, no matter how much you polish a turd, it's still going to be a turd. In college, I majored in systems engineering. And one of the systems engineers' most valuable assets to a project is to tell the engineers when it's just not going to work. That's the opportunity that you guys have, and Mayor, you have, is to tell Tim James that this toll road is not going to work for the communities and for your constituents and the Shreveport families. They make promises to lower speed limits, to put in landscaping and noise abatement. But we all know that a four-lane highway is not going to be mitigated by just a couple trees. These token gestures don't change the fact that this location is completely unacceptable for a four-lane highway. Not only will there be air noise pollution throughout construction, but also beyond, there's going to be trucks and cars exhaust just two hundred feet away from where our children play. Ultimately, it boils down to, this is going to be a private profit at a public loss. We, we being the homeowners in the community, are being asked to shoulder huge personal losses and safety to our children so that a private out-of-state toll road developer can make a profit. This project prioritizes corporate enrichment over the well-being of your constituents and your voters. My respectful request would be that if, before you vote yes, to get any sort of surveys or right-of-way, come visit our park and see how close this is going to be. Once you see it with your own eyes, what two hundred feet looks like, your common sense will kick in, and you'll understand that this isn't going to work. So in closing, two weeks ago, we welcomed our second daughter into this world. And I have much better things to be doing, like changing diapers, than to be standing here right now. But this is important to us. So we moved here to raise our family in a safe, peaceful community, and this toll road threatens everything that makes Twelve Oaks and Espinac Community a desirable place to live for young families. So I ask you, please have a backbone, use your common sense, and no matter how pretty the charts may look, don't prioritize out-of-state developers over Shreveport families.
Your time has expired, thank you so much.
And vote to stop the Red River Expressway. Thank you.
Thank you. Curtis Remen.
Fifteen years ago, my wife and I...
Mr. Remen, can you move to the mic, please, right here?
Sorry, stepped in the wrong spot. Fifteen years ago, my wife and I bought a lot in Twelve Oaks.
I need your address for the record, sorry.
Curtis Remen. Fifteen years ago, my wife and I bought a lot in Twelve Oaks.
We need your address for the record, I'm sorry.
We need your address for the record.
Ninety-three seventy-four Millbank Drive.
Thank you.
I'm wasting a lot of time.
But, well, no, we're starting now.
We're starting.
Three minutes from now.
Thank you.
Go.
Thank you. Fifteen years ago, we bought a lot in Twelve Oaks. Because of, from there, there was just an opening in the tree line along Bayou Pierre. This roadway would ruin that. We don't want it at all. We don't want any slower speed limits and all that. We don't want the road at all. It's going to ruin our quality of life for us and a number of other homeowners in our subdivision in Twelve Oaks. And Mr. Butcher, you commented yesterday that you hadn't heard much from your constituents. That might be because for years, it's been presented to us through our HOA as a good thing. I've never understood that. It cannot be good for our neighborhood. But it's been presented that way. And this summer, Tim James and his engineer came and put on a dog and pony show. They painted a rosy picture of what that road's going to be with trees and shrubbery, all this. Trees, trees take years to grow. And the speed limit, my son's a lieutenant with Shreveport Police. Shreveport Police is over a hundred, or about a hundred officers short right now. What are the chances of them coming out there and monitoring that speed limit? And what are the chances of eighteen-wheelers that are coming off of thirty-one, thirty-two, which I'm on nearly every day, where people drive fifty-five to seventy-five miles an hour? What are the chances of those trucks coming off of that and dropping down to thirty-five or forty miles an hour? It's not going to happen. Don't try to tell us that it is. No one's going to be there to enforce the speed limit. Truck drivers do what truck drivers do. Our property values are going to go down. This is not good for Twelve Oaks. It's not good for Esplanade. Please vote to stop it. Thank you.
Thank you. David Hackney.
Good afternoon, my name is Dave Hackney. I live at nine six six zero Railsback Ridge. Councilman Butcher's my councilman. I spoke here two weeks ago at administrative, raised some issues. Have not heard or received any feedback on those issues. So I'm here today, and thank you for having Mr. Buddha here to talk a little bit about Northwest Louisiana Finance. I have a page from their financial audit statement, and it says that because the city government appoints the governing board, the authority was determined to be a component of the City of Shreveport. It is true what you said about the liability and all that. The one question you didn't ask, Mr. Buddha, was how many projects that they handled the finance?
Attorney Basada. Attorney Basada. Attorney Basada is his name.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm mispronouncing.
That's okay.
How many projects does Northwest Louisiana Finance Authority end up owning? Because if you've read the CEA with what they're doing with the Red River Express is, is Shreveport will end up owning it and leasing it back to Red River Express. I hope everybody has read the CEA on that and understands what it is. It's a little more convoluted than I think the standard deal that they do. Now, specific to some of the Tim James and Red River Express issued, they spoke at the January NLCOG meeting, said they'd be under construction by September. That hadn't happened. They gave a cost estimate of about a hundred and fifteen million dollars to do the whole project. And it was about a third for the road in Bossier, a third for the road in Caddo, and a third for the bridge. Nobody I've talked to thinks you can build a bridge over the Red River for forty or fifty million dollars. As a point of reference, the Jimmy Davis Bridge, which is a four-lane, they're going to build a two-lane. They thought it was going to be two fifty. It ended up coming in, I think, at three sixty. So, you know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred million dollars. So the tolls have to pay for the loan, have to service the debt, and have enough money to do maintenance. And I'm an engineer. I've done project economics on multimillion-dollar projects, and the economics just don't appear to be there. So Mr. James did come to the Esplanade Homeowners Association meeting. He told us that the road was not going to be an extension of thirty-one, thirty-two. We liked that. Said, you know, the Section four oh eight permit with the Corps was going to be submitted. To my knowledge, it has not been submitted. Northwest Louisiana Finance Authority is waiting on project economics so that they can move forward with the USDA loan. To my knowledge, that hadn't happened. Mr. Butcher, yesterday, you said, well, they've granted concessions, thirty-five mile an hour, two-lane road, no take break. Is that for the entire road, you know, from Plornoy Lucas to the bridge? Or is it just the portion of this city-owned piece of property? Or whatever? The devil is in the details, and it's been pretty loosey-goosey to this point. And I would like to recycle this. I would like to delay a vote, recommend you delay the vote on this until we have some more, some more details, and that the issues that I brought up two weeks ago are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Compton. Good afternoon.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this afternoon. My name is Al Compton, and I live at eight ten Sartrace Drive in Twelve Oaks subdivision. Going to try and make this short and sweet to fit in the three-minute time slot. Four things are going to happen if the RRE goes in as proposed. For the folks in Twelve Oaks, an increase in noise pollution, an increase in air pollution, a decrease, a probable decrease in property values, and potential lawsuits filed against this parish and city of Shreveport by personal injury lawyers, which Shreveport has a plethora of. The federal EPA's own website states, and I quote, "Researchers demonstrated that exposure to pollutants emitted from motor vehicles can cause lung and heart problems and premature death." End quote. I understand the Red River Express will have a speed limit of thirty-five miles an hour to be enforced by the parish or city. The Red River Express has expressly denied any responsibility for enforcing the speed limit, transferring liability for noise abatement to the parish and or city. The simplest solution to air and noise pollution is additional separation between the Red River Express and the Twelve Oaks neighborhood. This can be done by limiting the right-of-way on city property for the main highway to the western edge of that property. This would force the Red River Express away from the western boundary of Twelve Oaks and also preserve the existing vegetation, which would reduce both air and noise pollution. Even if the Red River Express curved back toward Twelve Oaks after going through the city property, the smaller radius curve would hopefully cause trucks to slow down, thereby ensuring compliance with the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit. Without this physical limitation, I don't see a way that truck noise will be maintained below nuisance levels for the neighborhood. All of the studies that I've looked at showed a decrease in both air and noise pollution as distance from a roadway increased and highway speed limits decreased and were enforced. Let me conclude again by saying I'm not opposed to progress. Having exited Twelve Oaks for almost fourteen years, I welcome an additional exit to access thirty-one, thirty-two. However, if the quality of life and property values for my neighbors are significantly decreased, I may just be able to live with the single exit. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Bogart.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
I'm not used to speaking.
I'm not used to speaking in public. My name is Catherine Elizabeth Bogart, DDS. I reside at nine-three-eight-two Millbank Drive in Twelve Oaks. I purchased my home of April of two thousand twenty-two. I have two children. My son is fifteen, just turned, and my daughter is a freshman at Louisiana Tech University in pre-law. I moved there to get away from Island Park. My ex-husband, former husband, he still resides at Plantation Trace Estates. We were in the garden homes. So we were there for a totality of two thousand and five until I moved out in seventeen. He still resides there. I bring that up because upon living there, when they built the Arthur Ray Teague Expressway and they continued it, you know, to lessen the Jimmy Davis Bridge traffic load there, you know, it was great, you know, because, oh, it's going to, you know, the, the traffic's going to be better and whatnot. Well, some of my neighbors that were in the older part of Plantation Trace, the older part, and then, you know, there's the Estates where Scott Musket, Mudbugs Coach, and then Doug Brown, Brown Builders, who resides there still, they built their dream homes back there. They would have never built their dream homes if they had known that they would build that expressway within feet of their backyards. And some of that encroached ten to fifteen feet into their backyards with, excuse my language, but the Berlin Wall as their backdrop to their backyards, which is, it's a metal wall. And, you know, this term burn, I had to learn what a burn was. And I'm a nature lover. I have a huge garden in my backyard. I have twenty-two raised beds, and my neighbors love it. They like, some laugh, but part of the reason why I bought this home is because it's, it's like a wildlife refuge, you know? There's a baguette back there. It's beautiful. I have animals. So when these people bought their homes in Plantation, I speak from experience, the drag racing, this is in Bossier Parish. My father-in-law was James Dell Sutherland. He was an attorney and a special deputy for Bossier Parish for years. He was on the levy board. He was appalled at this. He has, you know, his grandchildren. The noise, my son won't even spend the night there because of the drag racing. And, you know, Bossier Parish, they don't play with, with law, you know, with noise and whatnot. But he won't, he, he said, Mom, I can't sleep there. And when I was in my rent house in Island Park, when my ex-husband and I got divorced, I could still hear the drag racing from Island Park, you know, which is not far from Preston Road and the YMCA, from my, you know, our former house, which is in Plantation Trace Estates. And I can still hear the noise to this day when I come visit. And I'm not a, you know, I'm not a Negative Nancy. I'm a, I'm a silver lining girl. I've lived in New Orleans, Virginia Beach, Chicago, Oklahoma City, and I can handle noise. You know, I'm not, I can block it out, but it's bad. And I, you know, these promises, I agree with Johnny and Curtis and, you know, all this, it looks great on paper.
Ms. Bogart.
I'm sorry.
Your time expired. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Johnny Cathy.
That concludes public comments, Madam Chair.
We have no executive appointments to consider today. There are no items under consent agenda for introduction to be added. Madam Clark, please proceed with regular agenda legislation.
Resolution one-twenty-one, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Shreveport and the state of Louisiana facility, planning and control division of administration for Shreveport regional airport expansion and improvements, planning, and construction.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Tella Pharoah, second by Madam Vice Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
This passes with seven.
Resolution one-twenty-two, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Shreveport and the housing authority of the city of Shreveport.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by the chair, second by the vice chair. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Dark, did you say this was to expand Bayou Grand Apartments?
Yes, sir. There is an additional unit being proposed there, and these are the streets that are around that, and we are partnering with them to make those streets more suitable for having the apartments next to them.
Do you think it would be wise to wait until, aren't we waiting on an engineering study about the flooding at Millennium?
What I was told was that we are accounting for this building in the study we're doing because we believe it's going to happen. But they'll have to do some detention upstream as well as part of, as part of the work. So the idea is that they don't make it worse. But I understand your skepticism because we've been through this with the other building or buildings. But what I was told was that we were trying to account for the, the additional load, if there is any, from the upcoming building.
So the engineering study is going to take in this additional concrete that's not yet there?
That's what I was told, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? Let's vote.
This passes with seven.
Resolution one-twenty-three, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Shreveport and the state of Louisiana Department of Treasury.
So moved. Second, so moved by Councilman Green, second by the chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
This passes with seven.
Resolution one-twenty-four, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Shreveport and the state of Louisiana Department of Treasury.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by the chair, second by the vice chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with seven.
Resolution one-twenty-five, authorizing the mayor to execute a telecommunications franchise agreement with Hunt Telecommunication. And there's a request for this to be postponed.
So moved to postpone.
Second.
So moved to postpone by Councilman Butcher, second by Madam Vice Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with seven.
Resolution one-twenty-six, authorizing the mayor to execute a gas franchise agreement with Delta North Louisiana Gas Company.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Madam Vice Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this, this pass with seven.
Resolution one-twenty-seven, authorizing the acceptance of a two-year, four-hundred-thousand grant from Bloomberg, Bloomberg philanthropies to support the construction of modular housing in the city of Shreveport and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents relative to this grant.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilwoman Baldwin. Discussion? Councilman Jackson?
Mr. Mayor, would any city funds be reallocated to support this project with the acceptance of this grant?
I, I'm not aware that we intend to do that, no, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? Let's vote.
This passes with seven.
Resolution one-twenty-eight, authorizing the mayor to execute a right-of-way servitude agreement with Red River Express LLC of Alabama for the survey, investigation, and construction of roadway facilities on city property. There is one amendment. This amendment clarifies a requirement that the potential ninety-nine-year servitude and agreement be approved by ordinance of the city count of the city of Shreveport before taking effect.
So moved on the amendment. Discussion?
So moved on the amendment by Councilman Butcher, second by Councilman Brooks. Discussion on the amendment.
Okay, so on the amendment, can we discuss the whole project or do we just discuss the amendment?
You can discuss the amendment and the reason for the amendment.
Okay, got you. Okay, so the reason for the amendment is I, I want to make sure, and there were some things that weren't clear about this particular resolution, and I wanted to make sure that this is not the final vote. I want to make sure that, that we go through the process. I found out last night something that I did not know. There were some questions that were asked at an event that was held at East Ridge for Esplanade, and we don't have the answers to some of those questions. I've talked to the developer, and he's going to get us the answers to those questions. I want to kind of tell you that before I go much further on this, I, I actually own property in Esplanade. So this, this directly impacts me as well as it impacts y'all. And our city attorney is your neighbor in Twelve Oaks. So this is something that hits us both, and we're trying to work through this as diligently and as cautiously as we can because we understand the impact to your homes. I will say this, I have, I have met with Mr. James one time. I've had about three or four phone conversations with him, and I was at a town hall type forum that really, to be honest, turned into more than what it was supposed to have been at East Ridge Country Club. The mayor and I were there as well. In my first meeting with Mr. James, which was in the spring, I told him that there were a lot of steps that needed to be done before I could support this one portion, which really, for those of you who know, and a lot of you said it, there's only a small portion of this road that's in the city. The majority of it's in the parish. And this right-of-way is really the only thing that we have, and possibly, we're finding out now, maybe some zoning issues with some lots that were purchased in Esplanade. So this is really the first time this will come to the council. When I met with Mr. James, I, I, when I ran several years ago, I preached public, private partnerships and how I thought that was the way that we could improve our infrastructure in Shreveport. Shreveport has not had a new road that I know of that is a thoroughfare that goes from one major road to another major road since the extension of Fern Avenue. And that was many, many, many years ago. I think thirty-one, thirty-two did extend right after that. But we, we, we are so far behind Bossier City and Bossier Parish on the extension of roads. I, as an elected official who is looking out for the entire city, but mainly my district, I have to look at everything. I can't just say, I'm sorry, this is not, this is not something that, that I think is important, because it is. Anybody wanting to bring economic development to the city of Shreveport, we need to cautiously look at it and listen to the people that are impacted by it. Furthermore, I feel that I've been around for a long time in this district, since I was fourteen years old. I've been through talks of private water systems. I've been through talks of, years ago, Southern Loop was supposed to go all the way to the port and was going to go down right by my house that I grew up in. I've been to all these meetings. And the thirty-one, thirty-two extension, which became, became active talk probably almost twenty years ago, when this, when this particular piece of property that we're talking about surveying and doing an appraisal on, when that particular piece of property, the city took it, there was always the potential of that roadway going through there. But unlike a two-lane roadway with thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, this was going to be a four-lane interstate-type roadway. Question was asked of me yesterday, do you think that the state will ever build that road? I mean, N L cog had it. I mean, it was, it was something that was going to happen. That's why the road was extended. It wasn't supposed to just dead-end into Plornoy Lucas Road. It was supposed to go all the way to the port. And the reason I know that is because I was fire chief at Fire District Five, and where they were going to run that particular road was through my fire station that I had just built. So I was very in tune with what was going on back in the mid-two thousands when this all picked up, before Esplanade and Twelve Oaks was developed. All this talk started way before those two developments were there. That doesn't negate the issue that, that people's properties are, are going to be impacted by this in any way, but that talk has been going on for several, several years. It predates both of those subdivisions. The question was asked of me yesterday, do I think they'll ever build it? Probably not, but I don't know, and I can't answer that question. As a property owner in Esplanade, I would much rather have that than what the lady was talking about with the Arthur Ray Teague Parkway with the elevated sound barriers and all that in my backyard. I would much rather have this. So when I met with Mr. James, I told him there were three conditions that, well, four conditions that I wanted. Number one, I wanted us to have as many public meetings as we could have prior to this coming to the council. I told him I was not going to schedule him, that he needed to get with the homeowners association, Mr. Larkin, which I totally, I might even go there about the Esplanade homeowners association. And Mr. Brad Armstrong with Twelve Oaks, that they needed to get in touch. I would be happy to facilitate that, but they needed to get in touch and present this as best as he could to these homeowners associations. He agreed to do that. Second thing I asked him, will you consider going to forty-five miles an hour on the speed limit? He said, yes, I will. I said, what about thirty-five miles an hour? He said, absolutely, thirty-five miles an hour, no problem. So he did. My third condition was, we need some type of soundproofing that is not a big metal wall like on I forty-nine. He agreed to do that. And then my fourth one was that before any of this happened, before any of it happened, we needed to be as forthcoming with everyone as we could be, and he was. He said that he would do that. So about a week later, he called me. We discussed everything, and I told him I want one other caveat. This was after the East Ridge conversation that we had. I want there to be no hazardous materials on this road. He said, done deal, no hazardous materials. So the question was asked of me, do I have this in writing? Absolutely not. Do I have in writing that thirty-one, thirty-two extension, an interstate, I two-twenty is going to go through your backyard? No, I don't. But I do have a commitment from the man, and he told me that. And, and on top of that, I have consulted with our attorney. And any right-of-way that is granted, which it's not, we're not even at this point yet, any right-of-way that granted, this will be put into the stipulations of us granting him that right-of-way. He has to do those conditions, and he has agreed upon that. The reason for this amendment is I wanted to make sure that this came back to this council. Once this due diligence period, when they do the survey, which we are responsible for the appraisal, he will pay us back, but it's our appraiser, it's not his appraiser. I want this to come back to the council for more discussion. I want, between that time, Mr. James, I would like for those questions that were asked in that East Ridge meeting are the ones that have been, that Mr. Hackney was talking about. I'd like for those questions to be answered, if, if at all possible. I was going to bring you up today and let you kind of talk about the project, but I think everybody here knows about the project and what it's going to look like. It's going to be a two-lane road. Another fifth thing that I asked him to do, and he has not done that yet, but I wish he would, I don't want to call it an expressway because it's not an expressway. I wanted to call it like a carriageway or a, some, I know that sounds petty, but I, I just sounded better to me than an expressway. But I think that what we have to do as a council, and for the reasons that I, that I stated earlier, we need to at less, at least let this process move forward because there's all kinds of questions. Twelve Oaks has questions about moving it over where it's not going into those homes right there next to the park. I lived in Twelve Oaks. I know exactly where the park is. I, I know exactly where it's at, and I know how close it's going to be. There might be a possibility that that could be moved over into our right-of-way. There's all kinds of things that are talked about, about an easier way to get in and out of Twelve Oaks, an easier way to get in and out of Esplanade. There are several things that, that he's going to be working on while this due diligence period's going on. And I will be more than happy to have a couple of town halls and let people discuss it, but I think we need to, to at least give it this chance to at least see where we are. And everybody needs to understand this is not the final vote. This is, this is not the final vote. And the narrative that the city of Shreveport is going to own this is, is not correct. And I would like to call Mr. Bussada up to, to answer Mr. Hackney's question on that, if that's okay, Madam Chair. Mr. Bussada, explain to me, you, you were privy to the email that I got about the ownership of this and that it would be owned by the city. You are the legal professional, correct, that is hired by us for our bonds and also by the, by the finance authority, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so give us your legal opinion.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. The city of Shreveport will not at any time full-stop own this bridge, period, end of story.
Okay. Or the roadway going up to the bridge?
Correct.
So none of this carriageway?
Well, let me, and let me be, and let me be very, let me be more specific and more clear. But the Finance Authority is participating in is the bridge portion of that. That's what the Finance Authority is participating in, is the bridge. Some of those feeder roads are being done separately. So as far as the bridge itself goes, no, that will not be owned by the city of Shreveport, the state of Louisiana, or anything like that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I wasn't going to bring Mr. James up. Mr. James, could you come up? Mr. James, while you're on your way up, will any portion of your road that is not financed by the Finance Authority belong to the city of Shreveport?
Excuse me. Say that again.
Will any of the portion of the road that's not financed by the Finance Authority be given to the city of Shreveport in any way or dedicated?
No, no.
So you'll retain ownership?
Yes, correct. And with the NASA authority.
Except for the part that's funded by the
Right, the city.
The separate grant.
Right. Yeah, that's the northern beach. Right, right.
Okay.
We're responsible for maintenance.
Okay.
Soup to nuts.
As far as, since this is a private roadway, can electronic monitoring devices be put on that private roadway for speed?
Can electronic monitoring devices be placed on your roadway?
Yes.
For speeding?
The policing of it will fall on the parishes. We've had discussions with both Bossier Parish and Caddo Parish. We haven't, I don't think, had a direct discussion with the city chief or not. But the policing will be done by the parishes in the cities, just like any other free public road. It will act like it, and it looks like it. But the structure is a funding structure. But you have total authority, just like any other public road. An example is the port. Those roads at the port are owned by the port, but the Sheriff's Department polices those roads, writes tickets, and works wrecks.
I think that my question more is, we do not have electronic monitoring devices in the city of Shreveport for speed.
I don't have a problem with it, if that's what you're saying.
Can it legally be done, though?
Wow.
Madam Chair?
The state law, the state law that regulates electronic speeding cameras requires that they are only able to be used in school zones.
Okay.
Since the 2025 law.
Yeah. I just was wondering, since this was a private roadway, if he could put it on his private road. Okay. So then that's?
I don't know.
Okay. That's something that I just-
So the particular roadway is actually located in the parish?
The majority of it is. We'll have a couple hundred yards, right?
About a quarter, that northern quarter is in the city.
But the majority of it is in the parish. This is the first stage. You've got to get, we've got to get the appraisal on it and the survey started. But really, to answer a lot of the questions about where the placement of the road's going to be, like 12 Oak Cat, you will be in, I guess you will be in conversations with both homeowners associations, I would hope, in this timeframe.
Right. The, if you'll allow me, just to remind the council what we do. We're not a city, nor a parish, nor a state. We do not have expropriation authority. So we have to negotiate with each landowner. And if you can't get, you can have the greatest needed project on the planet. If we can't get the right-of-way, you just move on. And so we're, you've got landowners up there. And if we can squeeze it over away from 12 Oaks, 30 feet, 40 feet, that creates more buffer. We're trying, we're working on it, and we're trying to do it. The nice people that spoke, I understand what they're saying. The way we got to this point, this is the history of it. We can't, you know, this is what we do. We with private, we're a private company, we're a for-profit company, and we look for needed, where there's needed infrastructure out there and where you fill a gap, a need that the public sector, the parishes or the counties in Alabama are not going to do it. And originally, we were going to bring the road into Flannoy Lucas to the east, okay? But over time, it murked, you know, it shifted and shifted. And the DOTD said, we want you to line up with 3132. So they're the ones who, you know, we can't enter the state right-of-way without their consent. You can't do anything on the state right-of-way without them approving it. They approve the plans, they do it all. They guide this stuff. And that's how we got there. When I first came to town, I saw that. And I saw the wings coming down. And I said, are they going to extend this? Is this an interstate? Because that's why those wings go out. They're designed to an extension of an interstate forever. Concrete interstate, just like an extension of 3132. And so we come along by accident. And it's just the way the, you know, someone asks, why does it take so long? It just takes longer than you always think. Why don't you do it? You said, well, I didn't know the government was going to get shut down. I didn't know, you know, things just happen in business. But the reason those wings are there, and this was considered decades before we came along, was to extend forward. So it's not a four-lane. That was some misinformation. It's a two-lane. It's not pretty pictures on an easel. It's a winding road that will feel much like Ellerby. It's the same, it's the same thing. And I am sensitive to these concerns. And I'm going to do everything that I can do to quieten it down, including do our best to shift it a little bit over to accommodate these folks. But I can't expropriate the real estate. I do not have that constitutional authority in the state of Louisiana nor in the state of Alabama. So all of these pieces, we got to this point due to interfacing with the state, you know, with the entities involved. Now, where we are, we're probably farther along than it seems. We're in the permit process. Our primary, believe it or not, the primary permit, that's the hardest one, was the full wetland jurisdiction. To build nine miles of any road in the state of Louisiana and miss wetlands is very hard to do, but we were able to do it. That was the biggie. Because that's a gamestopper if you get too much of that going on. That's done. We have a certified jurisdictional stamp by the U.S. Corps of Engineers and the Department of the Interior. All done. Our 408 permit, which is the bridge permit, the pre-application, which is in large part, the total application is in, is at the core. We've met with the core probably three times, maybe four times, I don't know. And it's been, so these, we are, to put it in football terms, and given that we're in Louisiana, we're LSU and we're on the Alabama 35. So we're very close. We're a lot farther than it seems. And, you know, you say, well, when? When are you going to get to construction? We hope now we've slid six, eight months, just because stuff happens. We can't control it. But we hope to have this thing under construction by next summer. Have I ever done this before? I developed the Beach Express. If you've ever been to Orange Beach and you've seen what used to be a toll road and 14 miles of four-lane divided highway, the entire project, 14 miles and a 2,000-foot bridge, which is longer than the one we're going to build here, was built from beginning to the end in 14 months. That's a mile a month. And we had a dry year. So this is what we do. I love Shreveport. I love Louisiana. If I had to, if you have to work out of town, this is as good as any place I've ever been. And I've gotten to know a lot of people and have made a lot of friends.
Well, I appreciate that. You know, for us, I don't feel like it's a done deal yet. There's still another major few hurdles. I think there's some zoning that we've talked about on those, on those lots that were purchased in Esplanade that still have to be taken care of. So I want the conversation to continue. I have added in the amendment that says that it does have to come back to the council. I believe it does anyway, but I've got some that disagree with me. So I added that amendment in here. So anything, the 99-year right-of-way has to come back to the city council of Shreveport before it can be approved. So once all of his due diligence is done, we have plenty of time to meet, have questions answered. But I'm going to tell you, as a property owner and somebody that lives in District D and travels District D, I still think that everybody that lives in 12 Oaks and in Esplanade needs to consider the potential of the state. At some point, we change governors, we can change governors every four years, and we can change legislators every four years. There is the potential of this turning into an extension of an interstate. And this, to me, is a public-private partnership. It's not requiring any money or liability to the city of Shreveport or Caddo Parish. And I just think that it's an economic development thing that we really deserve to, that deserves our full attention and also your full input. And that will definitely be considered. So thank you. I appreciate it. I do want your word, though, those four conditions. You're with that, right?
But just stick it in the agreement. Outside. That's done.
Mr. James?
Thank you.
Don't move. You have another question, Councilman Green?
Mr. James, you said LSU was on Alabama's what you are?
Going in.
Going in. You don't, LSU doesn't have a coach right now.
I'm going to apply for that job the way you pay those boys.
I just wanted, I didn't know if you were aware of it.
I'm an Auburn man. So we're all on the same side as it relates to that.
All right. Thank you. Have a good day.
I think, one more thing?
Yeah, just one other thing, too. Just specifically, I know that somebody sent a copy of an email about some complaints and saying, and I want to speak, look, I'm an attorney. I'm used to people saying bad stuff about me. I mean, we're attorneys. We're right there above, well, I won't say that. I don't want to offend anybody.
Electric officials.
But I do want to say this on behalf of the volunteer board members because there was an insinuation that the volunteer board members were willing to risk Shreveport's reputation. And the fact of the matter is, those board members spent multiple, multiple meetings asking those questions, whether or not this would have any financial impact on the city of Shreveport. They called in an auditor, an independent auditor, to give, you know, all the information on that. We did a legal analysis of that. So nothing could be further from the truth. So when we're talking about something this big, and I'm an economic development guy, when we're talking about economic development, we don't all have to agree or disagree on what we should do and what we shouldn't do. But we owe it to ourselves to make sure that we have the facts correct. Because people outside that are looking to invest in this community are looking at our dialogue. And when they see stuff like that, and misstatements like that, it sends the wrong message. So let's all just work together and make sure that we can at least all agree on the same facts. Thank you.
That's exactly what I've been trying to do in this since I was brought in, is get the facts and give it to the people. Now, somebody, from what I understand, got mad at me because they weren't notified by me. I'm sorry, Brad. I'm calling you out, but it's okay. But, look, if I can't, like I told somebody, and this is not to be funny, but it's true, I can't be an expert about how many screws you need in the top of your trash can and how I need to get somebody out there and get Jarvis to send somebody out there with a screwdriver and be an expert on the Northwest Louisiana Finance Authority. We are, we are pretty much, all of us sitting up here are volunteers, pretty much, that have our own careers and jobs. And we try to do the best that we can do, depending upon a great council staff that we have and a great legal people that we have like Mike and Marcus, who are full-time. So I have tried my best to keep everybody, somebody said, I can't believe you shared the email with me in it. Well, sorry. I mean, it's public record. I mean, I want everybody to know exactly where I am with everything. And I think I have tried to be as above-board. I've talked to Brad on numerous occasions. I've talked to Mr. Hackney. I've talked to other residents in there. Unfortunately, for some reason, y'all's homeowners association president in Esplanade won't return my phone call. So I have tried to be as upfront about this as possible, and I will continue to be until this process goes through. But this is the first step, but it ain't over yet. Thank you.
So Attorney Edwards, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I've already forgotten what we're supposed to be voting on.
Amendment one.
You're on the amendment one?
Amendment one.
Resolution 128?
Moved by Councilman Butcher.
That's correct.
Accepted by Councilman Green.
Would you state what that does?
It clarifies that in order for the temporary right-of-way servitude to be converted into a 99-year right-of-way servitude, the matter will have to come back to council by ordinance before authorization can be provided to the mayor to sign the 99-year servitude agreement.
Thank you. Can we vote now?
Madam Chair, one more question. So in that, in that interim, the dialogue continues because I have a whole bunch of questions. And so I don't want to, I don't want to just say, and I've talked to Councilman Butcher. So this is just opening the dialogue to continue to whether this is going to be a feasible project because obviously, you know, our citizens' voices have been heard, and they'll continue to be heard, as well as the contractor. So I want to make sure that it's not a one-and-done kind of thing. This is opening for a dialogue to continue, and it'll have to come back to the council for final approval, if it even gets that.
That is correct.
That is my understanding.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
So that's why the question was posed, why not postpone it? Because I think this just propels it forward, and then we can get more answers to our questions. Because I think that we really, I mean, and this is my dime store attorney opinion, which I'm not an attorney, but I do think, I do think that we're going to have to, like Mr. James said, there's going to be some NPC work that's going to have to be done. So.
So, just so everyone understands, if you did not hear this, this is not a final vote on this. There still is continuous dialogue as it relates to this, so you can still get your questions answered. Because they are surveying everything else that has to be done alone this way. And so your involvement is critical in this process.
Thank you.
Understood? Okay. So we have a first and a second on the amendment. No more discussion?
One more thing?
Wait a minute.
No. Is there any way you can get Councilman Green a morse, right there at the entrance?
No, you cannot. So I'm calling for the vote. It passes with seven. So move on the motion as amended?
Second.
So move on the motion as amended by the chair, second by Councilman Butcher. Any
And that passes with seven?
Attorney Edwards, I want to suspend the rules to vote on?
Item number six.
Item number 106.
On ordinance, on second reading.
On second reading and final passage. What's the procedure?
By motion and second and unanimous vote, you can suspend the rules during the meeting to, or you can move to take a matter out of order. Both would require a motion and a second and a unanimous vote.
Okay.
Madam Chair, so I'll give a reasoning so that the council will understand. Mr. Mayor is sick, and he needs to go to the doctor. So I asked him if we could suspend the rules so that we could assist him.
Absolutely.
At this particular time. So we would need-
Thank you for your courtesy, counsel.
You're welcome.
So what's that motion you say? I'll take the first one.
The first one was a motion to suspend the rules by the chair.
Second.
Second by Councilman Butcher. Any discussion? Let's vote.
That passes with seven.
And so now we will take up item 106 under ordinance, it's on second reading and final passage. May I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Well, she didn't read it yet. She got to read it.
Ordinance 106, amend the 2025 capital improvement budget. This is for the police headquarters.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Butcher, second by Councilman Green. Any discussion? Let's
And this passes with seven?
Please escort the mayor safely.
Yes.
Tari, thank you.
Also, Madam Chair, Gary was coughing, too. Do we need to do it?
Yeah. Yeah.
And I'm sorry, Mayor, for my extended, long-windedness, but.
Thank you. Get Chief Reese.
Get Chief Reese.
Get Chief Reese, please. Y'all keep the mayor in your prayers, please. Okay. Go back to the regular agenda.
Resolution 129, celebrating the life of Joyce Taylor Dixon on her 100th birthday.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilwoman Vice Chair, second by Councilman Green. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Councilman Butcher.
This passes with seven.
Madam Clerk, would you proceed with introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to November 21, 2025?
Resolution 130, approving the 2026 DDA program of work. Resolution 131, authorizing the mayor to execute an entity-state agreement between the city of Shreveport and the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development. And Resolution 132, authorizing a request to be made to the Louisiana Department of Natural Resources, Louisiana State Mineral and Energy Board, to seek public bids for an oil, gas, and mineral lease involving property located in District D described herein, and to execute the lease for certain mineral interests owned by the city of Shreveport, and to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents related to the intent of this resolution.
So moved for introduction. So moved for introduction by the chair, second by Councilman Green. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to November 21, 2025?
Ordinance 113, amend the 2025 budget for the general fund. Ordinance 114, amend the 2025 budget for the water and soil enterprise fund. Ordinance 115, amend the 2025 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 116, amend the 2025 budget for general fund. Ordinance 117, amend the 2025 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 118, amend the 2025 budget for the Economic Development District L Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance 119, to amend Chapter 18, Article 3, Division 3, concerning abandonment aircraft. Ordinance 120, amend Chapter 38.5 of the Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to environmental court fines. Ordinance 121, to amend Section 66-141 of Chapter 66 of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to contributions by full-time active employees and retirees. And ordinance 122, declaring paint and equipment acquired with federal community development block grant funds as surplus and authorizing their disposal or donation to qualified nonprofit organizations, subject to conditions.
Madam Clerk, before, there's a motion and a second. Do I act, can I ask a question before, or do I ask the question after it's been introduced? Mr. Dark, on 122, could you please explain or provide what is listed in this donation? What items?
Madam Chair, as I believe Ms. Howard said yesterday, there is, we are in, we own some old paint, which we do not believe is suitable anymore to be included in Paint Your Heart Out. We have, we're working on a deal with the Job Corps to provide it to them to use it for training purposes.
So, is paint the only items that's being donated?
I'd have to ask Ms. Howard. I'm not sure quite what else there might be. We can get you that information.
Yeah. Please provide the information that is.
Certainly.
Okay. These items have been introduced. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Motion by the chair, second by Councilman Green. Madam Clerk, please proceed with ordinance on second reading and final passage.
And I told you wrong. I apologize. Ordinance 97A, an ordinance of the Shreveport City Council creating an economic development district within the city of Shreveport to be named the Film and Entertainment Gateway Economic Development District, defining the boundaries thereof from which certain area local and potentially state sales and use tax increments will be determined and used to finance economic development projects within the district and as authorized by Part 2 of Chapter 27 of Title 33 of the Louisiana Revised Statute of 1950, as amended and provided for other matters in connection with the foregoing.
So moved.
Second. So moved by Councilman Green, second by the chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with seven.
Ordinance 104, amend in the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2025 Capital Projects Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Madam Vice Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with seven.
Ordinance 105, amend in the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2025 Capital Projects Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Madam Vice Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with seven.
Ordinance 107, amend in the 2025 budget for the MPC Special Revenue Fund Budget.
So moved. Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Madam Vice Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with seven.
Ordinance 108, authorizing the mayor of the city of Shreveport to enter into an exchange of immovable property with Wayne Simmons and Stephanie Simmons.
So moved. Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Butcher. Any discussion? Let's vote. Yes.
This passes with seven.
Ordinance 109, to amend Chapter 24 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, relative to Department of Community Development.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Madam Vice Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote. This passes with seven.
Ordinance 110, to approve the amendment of various articles and sections of the UDC regarding minimum off-street vehicular parking requirements.
So moved. Second.
So moved by Councilman Brooks, second by Councilman Butcher. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with seven.
Ordinance 111, zoning case number 25-97C, an ordinance to approve the amendment of the zoning map of the UDC by rezoning property located on the west side of Kingston Road, approximately 350 feet south of Francis Drive, from C2 corridor commercial zoning district to C2 CZD neighborhood commercial conditional zoning district.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Jackson, second by Councilman Green. Discussion, Mr. Clerk, you can bring your planners up.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. I'll be quick. So, this is a request, like it's stated in the ordinance, a request for a conditional zoning district. As a reminder, that's where you can place conditions on a particular use or site elements, you know, how the site plan is, operates. The property owner wants to operate a contractor's office here, which is not allowed in the C2 base zoning district. It wouldn't have been appropriate to request a higher zoning designation, given the residential properties that are behind it. So, there's only two stipulations that the MPC staff and the MPC board felt were warranted. So, first one being to maintain the existing vegetated buffer at the rear of the site. It's about 100 feet. They are going to remove 200 feet, but they'll maintain 100 feet. The second thing being that they would not have any outdoor storage of any kind, so all vehicles and equipment related to the contractor's office would have to be inside. So, we felt like that would properly mitigate a contractor's office that abuts a residential district.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? Councilman Jackson, what's your pleasure? Okay. Call for the vote.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just realized, I actually appraised that for the applicant, so I recuse myself.
You need to recuse yourself.
Yeah.
That passes with six.
I just, when you started talking about it, I was like, oh, I think I praised that. I did.
Okay.
You know the pleasure, yeah.
Ordinance 112, zoning case number 25-105C, an ordinance to deny the amendment of the zoning map of the UDC by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of Kings Highway and Barrett Street, from R15 single-family residential zoning district to C2 corridor commercial zoning district.
Thank you. Yes, my name's Chris Terrell. I'm in the MPC department, and as she was saying, this is a rezoning request from R15, a single-family residential zoning district to C2 corridor commercial, which is more auto-oriented.
Hold on, Mr. Chris. Let me get the motion on the floor. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So, so moved.
She didn't read it yet.
So, yeah.
Yes, she did.
She did. Yeah. So moved. By the chair, second by Councilman Jackson. Discussion. Don't start over with your name. You were.
Sorry, could you say that again?
Yeah, you could just go right in to the discussion.
So, this is a rezoning request from R15 single-family residential to C2 corridor commercial, which is more auto-oriented development with some improvements towards pedestrian uses as well. They're wanting to develop a gas station and retail sales of alcohol, beer and wine specifically. If you do approve the C2 zoning, they would need a special use permit for both uses, and they would need to do a subdivision. We're recommending denial. It does not meet the future land use map recommendations, which is residential medium, which is more, more for a single-family townhomes and small apartment complexes. So, alternatively, if you wanted to approve something different, you could do CUV, Commercial Urban Village. A gas station would not be allowed there, and a retail sales of beer and wine would need a special use permit. Again, we're recommending denial. You could do CUV, or you could approve this request for C2.
Thank you so much. Councilman Brooks, what's your pleasure?
My pleasure is to deny the rezoning. So, do we vote yes for denial?
Vote yes to deny.
Vote yes, please.
We have a motion to uphold the findings of the MPC, the no-vote, but denying the this case, so. Motion by Councilman Brooks. Can I get a second? Second by, who said that?
I did.
Okay, Councilman Tyler Farrell. Any other discussion?
It was already moved and seconded. That was discussion.
I'm sorry.
And now you can move straight to the vote.
Okay, thank you. Let's vote. I was double-checking all of my options, making sure that we were good.
This passes with seven.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, is there any table legislation to be removed from the table today?
No, ma'am.
Thank the Lord, Jesus. Is Shelley Regal here?
Shelley is not, but she had folks here.
Mr. Charles. Mr. Charles, can you come up?
Mr. Charles, just for the record, we begin a lot of mixed information. Can you explain, I want to take this, Councilman Brooks, if you don't mind, the permit process for under the bridge, Red River Bridge? When is the permit process required versus just people just showing up?
Okay, so, these are the issues and the challenges that we are facing right now in the Red River District. That area, because of the open container, is, has become and is being used as like a central meeting place for all downtown partygoers. With it being a open, public space, it can go from five people being down there to a couple hundred people being down there in an hour or so, just by a word of mouth or a text or a social media post. The city, we do not facilitate the event or provide city services or resources unless it is a permitted event that would include tables, chairs, barricades, the use of the stage, the power, the electrical. We do not turn on the power to the stage or the lights on the stage unless we have received a permit from the event organizer. Other than that, people just coming down there gathering, it's an unpermitted event. But like I said, it's a open, public space, so you really can't stop people just coming down there and gathering. But when you go to the point, you start advertising on social media. You're inviting vendors, food vendors down there, and vans, and you want to use the stage and electrical, and that's when a event permit is required.
Okay, so I'm going to just double back. Let's say they're not using the stage at all, but they created a flyer advertising for people to come down there. With a business being down there, wouldn't we say that's what a business is supposed to be doing? If the business is creating a flyer advertising for people to come down there? So, let's talk about the business advertising for people to come down there, and then let's talk about just a random person advertising for people to come down there. Is that the same, or is that separate?
Anytime you advertise on social media and you're inviting people to come to this space, it is considered an event, because now it's a public safety issue, and you're bringing more people down there, and the permitting process requires SPD staffing, so it has to be approved by task force and SPD staffs that, and it lets them know, give them an idea of what's going on down there and how many people will be down there so they'll know how to properly staff.
Okay.
Okay. Councilman Brooks.
You said, once it goes through permits, that's when the electricity and the lights are on? So, one event that we heard that was not permitted, and they did use the stage, where did the electricity come from?
We've encountered vandalism to the breaker boxes. They will cut the lock. They will take the hinges off of the breaker box, or they will use an extension cord to get power from another existing building, or, excuse me, a pole or something that has electrical down there. So, they find ways to go around us not letting the power on the stage.
So, do we have cameras in that area?
Oh, yes. We have, I think, maybe 12 to 16 cameras. Every inch of the district is, you can see on cameras.
And it's just a sidebar for the people that have chatter. The Red River District is not my council district. Mine are the casinos. They're all around there, because I keep getting phone calls on them. It's like, it's not my district, you know? Councilman Brooks and I share downtown, but I'm on the casino side, on the amphitheater side, so I need to clear that up for some people. They keep calling me in reference to that. But I know that we talked about the permitting in the public safety meeting, and I really want to make sure that we have a follow-up. Same thing that Councilman Brooks want, to ensure that when we have these particular, when we have events, I think it is imperative that the event coordinator must be in the room. If they are not in the room, the event should not be permitted.
Right.
Period. And that will eliminate a lot of that particular activity. And then I also think, too, you know, I know that Chief Wayne says that they get notifications, but I will urge the public that if you see a flyer or you see the gathering and you want to ensure that it is permitted.
Right.
Then make sure that they, they can contact the police department. They can send it to us as the council, and we will send it to SPD, you know, or you all to look at, to let them know, to get clarification on that.
Correct.
To help you all out in addition to. Because we want to eliminate as much interruption if we feel, if we thinking that it's going to be a hazard. But I think on the event side, that we definitely need to ensure that event coordinators are sitting in the room, so all of them will have that level of understanding of what they need to do as far as an event or don't award the permit.
Right.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you for the information. I would like to see this process take on the same, to be the same as we do for the parades. Everybody's around the table. Everybody that has anything to do with security or streets, drainage, litter pickup, whatever it is, everybody is at the table, so everybody knows. My concern is that if, if I want a permit for an event and I expect my event to draw hundreds of people, or whatever the number is, that the chief of police has to weigh in on a security aspect, because it does us no good to have a permit with 200 people and not enough enforcement to handle those 200 people, regardless of where the chief decides to get it, whether it's special services, off-duty, whatever it may be. I think that's a concern. I think that's a concern of mine that just because we enter, that issue a permit, we have to have the security numbers to go along with the ratio. Is that, is that out of?
Yeah, that is part of the permitting process.
All right.
It is approved through task force, which includes, um, SPD, risk management and all city departments. So they do approve it and then they decide the manpower that's gonna be needed for that particular event.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Butcher.
Should we do some type of amendment that requires these, uh, like, a lot of people aren't even coming to these meetings. Should we have something, an amendment to the existing ordinance that says that the promoter must come to these, you know, to these meetings?
Will we do that?
Um, all, we're deep into policy now.
Okay.
That, all of these procedures are basically at the discretion of the director. The, the permits that are established via SPAR are done, um, via, uh, basically administrative policy. So, uh, one of the things that was discussed at the, uh, public safety meeting where this was discussed was, uh, potential overhaul of all the special event permits and including that in the, um, in the, in the permits going forward. Um, but there are permits for the Red River District, for Festival Plaza, parade applications, Riverview Hall. There, there are different permits for different situations available on the SPAR website. And they all list out on, on the first cover page, the circumstances under which they're required and, uh, the requirements thereof, including certificates of liability, um, police and EMS prevention services, um, uh, payment to SPAR event staff. I mean, all of that is on this, this first cover page. So, but, but all of that, um, um, in the last public safety meeting, uh, the discussion from SPAR was that it, it's perhaps time to revamp all of that, to sort of take another look at it. And, um, um, my understanding is that SPAR is open to the idea of, uh, insisting that the, the applicant come to a meeting, um, come to the task force meeting where it is discussed.
Well, I think that, that only makes sense. And then the other, the other caveat of that that would, would not require, uh, legislation is, are the tenants down there notified of when an event is gonna happen? So like the bird was, was permitted, were they notified of that? Because if I owned a bar down there and I saw people setting up, I would assume that they're permitted.
Correct.
Um, I think that that should be our practice that SPAR or needs to notify those bar owners, if you're not, that hey, we're gonna be having a special event here. You may want more security. You may want this. But that also stops it. If, if they see somebody setting up out there, breaking into a breaker box to get power, then they can immediately call the police department and before there's three hundred people down there, we can, we can head this off. So I would like for there to be some kind of policy put in place by y'all to notify the tenants when there is gonna be some type of special event.
It is and we do.
Okay.
All the tenants in the Red River District, um, every application is, is a, an email to them and sent to them for.
Okay, good.
Approval, I would say approval, but just to notify them that the event is happening. Because if somebody doesn't approve, doesn't mean that the event is not gonna happen. But just letting them know that there's gonna be influx of people down there. And we just try to make sure that, um, that their business still can be, you know, patronized during that.
Can we make it to where, can we make it to where it's policy for them, if they see something out of the ordinary, to let y'all know where y'all can get SPD down there? Because.
Uh, they, they do that too.
Okay.
They, they will let us know.
I feel that, you know, if, if there are three hundred people down there in an unsanctioned event, I mean, the chief's outnumbered. I mean, I, it's just be honest. I mean, it's, it's just not, it's, it's gonna be hard to disperse that many. But if there's only ten or fifteen people down there, they can be dispersed a lot easier.
That's why it's important for them to be in the room.
Yeah.
Okay. And it doesn't matter if it's at Riverview Hall, doesn't matter at what facility that they have. They all need to be in the room with the permitting process.
I agree, agree.
Just like with them on the red was a permitted, uh, uh, event, you know? It was a, it was a permitted event. As you said, bird was a permitted event.
Right.
It is imperative to let those individuals know. I agree with the business to let them know what is going on, you know? Because the benefactor was to drive businesses to the other business, uh, as well when dealing with the open container. But I don't think it needs to be an exception that if you plan an event, you need to be in the room. And therefore, if it's not on the updated list for that, especially if it's some for wha- whatever entity, then that's the way they have to get out.
Right. But I also think we need to have a plan for when there is no event per se. Um, we can have three hundred people show up tonight just because people just wanna be under there. They, they know it's a popular place.
Correct.
There could be no advertisement, no nothing. I mean, somebody can say, look, I mean, Garrett Brooks can post, hey, I'm gonna be under the bridge and he may have three hundred fans, you know, show up for him.
Yeah.
Where them fans at? Where those fans at?
So.
Not the fan.
I've seen it happen. I've seen it happen.
Not only fans.
And, and, and hopefully this is a good problem because, you know, administration can tell us what sales tax we're generating from it, but we want it downtown to, to, to be lively enough. We wanted people to go down there and enjoy themselves safely. So this is something that we've always wanted, but we need to prepare for it and, and not push it away because we, we don't have proper planning.
Right, 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 right. I think the open container, I think it, uh, is maybe being misabused a little bit. People bring their own, it's be wild, be, they bring their own bottles.
You could say it's being abused. It's something that we need to correct and reevaluate. And then it's something that we need to push the, the owners of the area for their specific cup and we don't see those things in their cup.
Right.
And so it has to be a level of enforcement with that.
Yep. Initially, the cups were apart. We never revisited it.
Right.
And then we also talked about doing armbands because from my understanding, it's a lot of miners there.
Right.
Um, we're not checking for weapons.
Right.
So I think that we're headed in the right direction. Um, I think Councilman Brooks is gonna do a public safety meeting. And then the chief, we would love some different ideas from you that would can help your department. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Y'all talking about these cups. Y'all talking about Lord Supper cups?
No, nobody talking about Lord Supper cups. Here you some TJ, TJ Swan in there. Swan, TJ Swan.
Are, are you done yet?
I don't know if they lost cups. So I know the company you're in.
I think the people that are pulling, that are pulling permits and throwing the events with all of the proper permits, I don't believe we're having a problem with those. Is that correct?
No.
Okay. So we have twelve to sixteen cameras down there? Is that correct? Chief, are they tied into RTCC? Okay. Um, perhaps on Friday and Saturday nights, someone should specifically monitor that, uh, that district. And when you see a crowd starting to gather, Councilman Butcher's right, when it gets to three, four, five hundred people, you've said it yourself, it's too many people to disperse. So an officer could go down there and ask the DJ who's setting up for his permit. If he doesn't have it, then he can be asked to leave when there's only twenty people there. So I, I think we need to do that, but at the end of the day, we're probably gonna have to do something similar to Beale Street. The open container's not gonna work if people bring their own bottles. It's not gonna help any of the bars and restaurants down there and it's, and it's, it's just simply gonna lead to, we don't know how old they are. We're not selling them anything, so we're not making any money. Well, I guess some liquor store is, but the Red River Entertainment District is not. So that, that's my thoughts on it. Uh, as far as the unpermitted, we're just gonna have to try and figure out how to catch them before they get too big because SPAR either has already denied them a permit or is simply not aware of the event.
I spent some time, uh, down there today, about two hours this morning, walking around with, uh, uh, my staff and technical staff, uh, doing really a review of that entire area down there. And we have compiled, uh, a list of considerations that I'll be passing on to miss, to the mayor uh, before the week is out concerning that entire area. And just to name a few, when that was first developed, there are some existing, uh, cameras down there that we don't have access now, that when that was developed, uh, the casinos put in for us. We had a kiosk down there and all of them fed into the kiosk. Uh, I saw today that those are still existing, but we have no idea now whether they're working or not. Um, how many cameras that were installed that is owned by, by SPAR, that's been quite a few years ago. And even though they are still working, they're feeding into RTC, uh, weak at stands, a little upgrade, a little bit better technology. There were some, uh, blind spots that could not be seen at all. We need to add a few. There's some ingress and egress issues. I remember when that was controlled access, when that first, uh, opened, that was done by private security and we did not have any issues. But the mayor shared all that with you. Quite a few things that I think that, uh, can be done. Uh, beside, we talked about whenever there's a special event or anytime, uh, RTC, you know, we've combined, uh, that with the sheriff department now. We can isolate any number of cameras. We can hire back, uh, you know, a, a monitor either from the city of Freeport or from the sheriff department, who that is their job to watch those cameras exclusively, monitor that area and pick up the radio sitting beside them and call when there's something unusual. But we're gonna submit all of that to the mayor for consideration that I think will really, really, uh, help in, in that area.
And chief, why, why, why are you considering that, um, something that was brought to Councilman Brooks' attention that you briefly mentioned to me?
Yes.
Um, what would the pros and cons be? You don't have to answer today. Um, if we were to lease it out and make it a private owned entity, the reason I say that, Council, uh, Madam, uh, Vice Chair mentioned weapons, state passed a law that says you can open carry, conceal carry, um, anywhere that's public. Um, and because under the bridge is not privately owned, um, people can be down there with weapons and, and, and all you can do is just, is, is watch.
I don't, uh, that's true in one sense, but not necessarily true in another sense. And I think we encountered the same, uh, issue at the Red River Revel years ago. The city actually owned the property, but when the city leased to a private company, individual, then they make the rules for that time or that space. For the Revel, it was the same way. We had people that wanted to come with open carry, but if the private person who the city had leased to, which is lawful, says no, then they can't come for that time. And I don't see how that would be much different, but that would be a legal question that have to.
So if there's an event, the event owner can make the rules, but if there's no event, people can walk under the bridge with weapons?
Yes, because it's public. But when the city leases it, uh, that becomes the legal person in charge at that time. And if they say no, then that means no.
And see, I like the idea of a permanent lease. Um, so just considered that as well.
Control, egress and ingress, I looked at that. And if that is monitored, well, first of all, uh, the fire marshal, as we did with H and H, have to evaluate the space and says, okay, safely, three thousand people can be in this space.
Right.
Then at ingress at either side, some persons standing there with a magnetometer, fifteen hundred people is all I can let in at my side until somebody come out to, uh, make it, make it much safer. But we, we took a real critical look at it and identified, uh, quite some areas of improvement. Plus, the pol- the police or whoever is there, and we've communicated with, with, uh, SPAR. We know where the power is.
Right.
We have the authorities to go there and pull the breaker, shut the stage down. Exactly right.
So if a, if one of the businesses down there is having a gathering and those, and let's say they hire the band, is it then the, the responsibility of that business to express how many individuals they anticipate on being there? Or when they go out in the common area, is it still the city's?
See, that's what becomes kinda tricky. The, the fire marshal is gonna say, in this area, this, which is the common area, three thousand people is the limit.
Okay.
So a business can invite up to three thousand people for that area.
But they would have to secure that area. But the business would have to pay for the, for the area? Or will the city provide offices for the area?
I don't think it should be the city. The business should have to supplement that some kind of way or another. If it was normally open to any and anybody could come and go if they want to, then that's different. That's, that's taxpayers initiated. But when it's a controlled environment, a private party of function, I think that's taking it a little bit outside of what the city should be totally responsible for.
Is that how you all examine it too, Mr. Charles?
Ma'am.
Is that how you, I was asking, Charles? Just, I'm sorry, Mr. Heinz. Is that the way that you all look at that as well?
Yes. Um, we have instances where people wanna have events under the bridge, ticketed events, and they barricade a certain area off.
Okay.
And that's, that's the way that they can tell, fire prevention can tell how many people is there 'cause they only allowed to sell so many tickets.
Okay.
Um, but with it being wide open like that, it's hard to say or determine how many people is gonna come and enter this space. So without a, without an entry point, if somebody counted, you can't really.
So we need to establish entry and exit points when a business is, it, it, when a business extends from their business into the common area.
Yeah, that's the only way you'd be able to control.
Okay. Makes sense. Okay.
I know when it, when it first was developed, uh, there was an entry point off of Commerce Street, right, uh, beside the railroad track. We couldn't block the railroad track. You can see where the bottlers still were there in the ground. And on the other side, the Clyde fence side, that was an entry point where you had to come through. Any person looked at you, you know, visibly to see whether.
Okay.
You were safe or not.
Is it for them to determine the entry point or do you all determine the entry point?
Um, fire prevention, you have to have.
Oh, so fire prevention has to come in.
They, they did how many entries and exits they need to have.
Got it. Makes sense. Yeah.
Nick, we can't have nothing really permanent because of the amount of people that could be there if something happened and need to get out. It's gotta be collapsible walls like a barricade where when people need to get out, they run over and it falls down instead of a narrow.
Blowout point.
Blowout point, exactly right.
All right. Okay. Thank you. So we have no property standards or ABO appeals to consider today. We have no MPC ZBA appeals to consider today. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk?
No ma'am.
Um, are there any reports from boards, offices and committees?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I, I am planning a, uh, charter review committee meeting.
Okay.
Probably, um, before the next council meeting.
Uh, I just wanna thank all the, uh, city department heads for coming out and supporting me on yesterday's, uh, town hall meeting. Um, a lot of great information was disseminated and I wanna appreciate that. And also give a special thank you to, uh, Dr. Johnson for, um, preparing that meeting and, um, those talking points. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, is there a clerk's report?
No ma'am.
Mr. Darker, are there any other communications from the mayor's office?
Just wanted to thank Mr. Heinz. I believe this is his first time doing this for you all and you didn't kill him and we appreciate it.
You're welcome. Does any other council member have any additional comments? I do want to remind you all that on Thursday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five at ten thirty, uh, the Housing Authority of Shreveport invites you to the groundbreaking ceremony for Fairfield Estate Two. That's at eleven fifty-six Wilkinson Street, um, because it was canceled due to the weather. And so they're gonna have the groundbreaking ceremony at ten thirty. I'm gonna ask you all to keep Mayor Arsenault in your prayers, please. Yes. Y'all take those masks off for Halloween. Yeah. Executive session, there's none. If there's nothing else, meet James at Morrison's. Meet it is a journey. Thank you.